Can I have your attention, please? I'd like to call the meeting to order. And welcome to the Lowell Planning Board, October 18th, 2010. First matter on the agenda, and we do have acceptance of our previous minutes. I knew we had a typo on one of the dates, which has been corrected. So our first matter is September 23rd, 2010 minutes. And the second one, I think, had the same date, but then they changed it to the October 4th. It will do to September 23rd, first. Any of the board members have any corrections or comments in regards to September 23rd, Planning Board minutes?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for September 23rd minutes.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. Those minutes have been approved. The next matter is for the October 4th, 2010. I know in our packet, there was a little typo for the date, so now we do have that corrected. And the other typo was on October 4th. We had Attorney Joseph Clermont as being absent, but he was present that evening. So that correction was brought to the associate planners, and they indicated they will change that. So after reviewing those minutes, we have that correction, which was outlined by myself. Having said that, do any of the other board members have any corrections on those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one small. I actually forgot I circled it, and it's very minor, but just the section regarding the annual meeting of election of offices, it's just if my name could be changed to Gerard rather than Gerald. There have been some minutes where I've actually been Gerard and Gerald and Jerry, so...
Okay.
Was... It was on the previous one.
Oh, on the 23rd, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which one was it?
Yeah, third page, right here.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I thought...
Okay. So if we just backtrack and have that amended, if there's no objections to make on the motion?
No, no objection.
Okay. So therefore, the September 23rd would be amended as approved, okay? All right, so that's done. So now, we'll go back to October 4th. Any comments on October 4th, besides the one I made for the date change and that Attorney Clermont was present at that meeting? None? Okay. Motion to approve?
Motion made in second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Okay. Any opposition? Hearing none. Those motions are approved. Moving along tonight, we do have some new business. We have some, under public hearings, we have some zoning amendments. And this is in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48A, Section 5. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to ordinances to amend the Code of Ordinances, City of Lowell, Massachusetts, with respect to Chapter 290. There are entitled zoning, amending various sections related to vehicle facility standards. I believe we have matters that went, on these matters, it goes before the city council first, and they have it sent to the city solicitor's office as well, and then the council makes a recommendation to send it to the planning board for a public hearing. At this time, we hold a public hearing, and we make recommendations, and we vote on the matter from here. We'll go back to the city council for a public hearing there. The zoning proposed amendments, it looks like there is approximately six of them. And these are addressed, proposed zoning amendments, from Mr. Vernon Lynch, the city manager, to Mayor Melonazo and the members of the council, then forwarded to us. And I'll just read how it was addressed by the city manager. Dear Mayor Melonazo and the members of the Lowell City Council, enclosed please find an ordinance containing proposed zoning amendments dealing with a number of related issues that have been the subject of city council motions and discussions on recent months. The ordinance includes the following provisions. What I would suggest we do with board members, if we could just take them one at a time, if no one has objection to that, and that we, instead of trying to cover them all and come back and forth. So the first one would be adjustments to the curb cut dimensional regulations to encourage the use of pervious paving in exchange for more relaxed width restrictions with introductions of a special permit process to allow single and two-family homeowners to seek the wider curb cuts if they can demonstrate that their projects won't adversely impact neighborhood character, on-street parking availability, stormwater management, or public infrastructure. I believe we had some zoning chart, which was attached to us by the Planning and Development Department, to try to go along and have us see what the changes may be. So it's basically trying to change the curb width. Aaron from Planning and Development, you have any comments on that? Or basically, what you feel is, if you can expand on what the benefit would be to change the current or negative parts, or making the maximum curb feed to wider? It looks like it would, what they want to put in the zoning show table under 6110 would be, "In all zones, curb cut single-family and two-family residents shall have a maximum curb cut of 15 feet, which may be extended to 24 feet by right if all parking facilities serving the structure are paved with pervious surface. At a minimum, the pervious surface, including base material, must accommodate the annual recharge of stormwater for the entire parking facility under pre-development conditions based on soil type. The maximum curb cut with serving single-family and two-family residents where parking facilities are paved with an impervious surface may also be extended to 24 feet in width with a special permit if the zoning board of appeals finds that the wider curb cut will not be detrimental to neighborhood character, availability of on-street parking, stormwater management, and municipal infrastructure." So it looks like, basically, in the one-to-two-family zoning, they can extend the maximum curb cut from 15 to 24. And then, I believe, do they have to come much before the plan department, or this, somewhere in-house to get approval? How would that work?
Yeah, basically, this amendment is addressed to alleviate some concern that the maximum curb cut in the traditional suburban, single-family districts is too restrictive. And so the city council would ask that an amendment be drawn up that allows some flexibility in that width, but also mitigates the negative impacts that are, you know, that come from having wide curb cuts. Two of the biggest impacts are the loss of onsite parking due to the wider curb cut, and then also stormwater impacts. So there's basically two avenues for a property owner. One is to replace the entire driveway and parking area with pervious surface, whether it's a paver or pervious pavement. And by doing so, they are allowed to take the curb cut at 24 feet. The other option is, if for whatever reason that's not a viable solution, they can seek a special permit from the zoning board of appeals and get the wider curb cut, as long as they can show that, you know, that curb cut is not detrimental to the neighborhood character, you know, it doesn't have substantial impact on on-street parking and the stormwater impact. And then, some of the language in there, that it gets a little long and kind of hard to understand, is basically just saying that the pervious surface that is put in its place is just supposed to act as if there isn't a parking spot there. It's supposed to recharge water as if there was just, you say, grass or whatever. And that's something that the city engineer would review during the driveway permit phase, that they can go through that process and make sure that the pervious surface is built to a certain standard.
Okay, so I guess what my question leading up would be, so if they went from the maximum curb cut over 15 to 24, that would come to go to the city engineer for permit, as they do now for the driveway permit?
That's correct.
Okay. And if it goes beyond, I'm just trying to get the word here, make sure, so the minimum curb cut with... And then if it went to extend to 24 feet, then that would have to go before a public hearing for the zoning board of appeals?
Only if they don't use the pervious service, surface option.
Okay.
If they, if they use the pervious surface option, they can go, just to get a...
And they have to go to the city engineer's office to check the pervious surface?
Yeah. They could, they could check the infiltration calculation, get understanding what the base material is, to make sure that it would infiltrate the amount of stormwater that needs to.
And then I guess, one question that they ought to, so if they met that criteria, how do they keep that criteria in effect?
How do they maintain it? There is, there is a certain maintenance element to pervious surfaces, particularly pervious pavement. There is a certain level, you can't, you don't, you can't sand it during the winter. So there would also be some sort of a maintenance plan. It sounds like it's a, it's a challenging thing, but it's usually one or two-page maintenance plan that the property owner would have to maintain. It's like, I think every two years, you have to do some sort of cleaning to make sure that the porosity of it isn't filling up with, you know, sand and gravel and that sort of thing. So there's, there is a maintenance element to it.
Okay. All right, and now that I've asked those questions, just to throw these matters out here to start, since this is a public hearing, and I indicated we do have five amendments, I'll take them one at a time. At this point in time, I'd like to know if anybody here would like to speak in favor of the curb cut change under the zone?
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, my name is Mark Coleman, 58 Oakland Street Law, Mass. We should be recording the payment of this. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of the curbing change? Anyone else in favor? In favor? Hearing none. That portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone like to speak in opposition to the curb change? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. That portion of public hearing is closed. Any of the board members have any questions, comments? Mr. Fisher, if I could start with you, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just, Aaron, I think I was actually watching the city council meeting when, when this issue came up, and I believe, right now, the only remedy is to go for a variance, be denied, and then go before the zoning board of appeals for variance. So this was to try to prevent, I mean, you still have to go before the zoning board of appeals, but you don't have to go through that parliamentary exercise of being denied and, and then requesting a variance. I mean, that's, in essence, is that what we're...
I think that's part of it, yeah. I think it's absolutely part of it. But I think it's also, it's, it's meant to alleviate the challenge for certain circumstances where, you know, people really do want the wider curb cut for access, ease of access, what have you. But it's also intended to preserve or mitigate, mitigate the impacts of stormwater of doing so. Because whenever you widen the curb cut, you also widen the driveway, you also widen the parking lot. So, and in one single-family lot, it's not huge, but you start aggregating 20, 50, 100 lots that are starting to do this, you start having a substantial stormwater impact. So this was, this was a process that I think actually one of the city councilors suggested to provide the flexibility of widening the curb cut, but also preventing the stormwater impact of doing so.
Sure. Well, I mean, they have two options. They don't, they don't have to go with the uncertainty of getting the special permit, as long as they went with the impervious, the pervious surface, and then if they want to go with the hot top, they can take their chances with the...
Yeah, that's right. Good. Exactly.
Good, thanks. Thanks, Aaron.
Any further questions? I also received in our materials, which I should have read earlier, at this point in time, we received two emails to Mr. Aaron Kloss and our associate planner in regards to these matters. So at this point in time, I will read these into record. And this first one is from Anne Marie Page, who is from the Centerville Neighborhood Association. And it is on tonight's agenda. Aaron, we here in Centerville approve the changes tonight going on the floor, but we meet on the third Monday of every month except December. We requested in the past that the board please respect the date for any Centerville items or something as crucial as tonight's zoning issue. We support this proposal, as we do not need to be able to distinguish between any old drive-thrus versus a drive-through that actually may benefit the neighborhood. We realize that we have a very good proposal about to fix up a very sad piece of neglected property that'll give us a bank drive-through. This would be good for our neighborhood. Where a drive-in for donor plays on that site would not be. A negative vote tonight would impact the progression of a proposed development on that site. A development that the neighborhood supports that would also bring in revenue to city. The proposal will allow the planning, zoning boards to distinguish between what is good for the neighborhood and still be able to deny a project that would not be good for that particular neighborhood. This would not take away the power of the neighborhood, it would put more control over it. In other words, a good project for the neighborhood could be approved, where a bad project could still be denied. We appreciate your help on this one. Anne Marie Page, CNAG, approved. Pat Hunt, President, and CNAG, which is Centerville Neighborhood Association. If possible, please read this at the meeting tonight, since we aren't able to have a rep there. Anne Marie and Pat, Anne Marie Page and Pat Hunt. Another one is from, this is from Deb Fergone, from the Potteckville Citizens Council. This is addressed to Anne Marie and Aaron, and CC for the planning board. Here over Potteckville, we're not aware this was being done for a particular project. The problem is, the rest of the neighborhoods have neighborhood business district. If there was a particular product, like the one you mentioned, could they just change the zoning for that site instead of changing the zoning for a whole city? I think there needs to be more thought, long-term, and input from our neighborhoods, and we also meet on Mondays for our monthly meetings and e-board meeting. Since this effect, all neighbors, I think my concerns and the proposals should be considered. Changing for a specific project may be more fair than to change for everyone. Aaron, can you please read this email to the planning board? Here from this, Aaron, this proposals aren't being changed for one particular project coming before us, is it?
No, this is an amendment to the entire zoning ordinance that would change the use table, that would break out driveways or drive-throughs serving restaurants and/or service businesses into two separate categories based on traffic impact and capacity needs for them to function successfully. So it's, it's a change in the, in the use table primarily, not just a specific...
I know I'm going to break these into five different categories, but it sounds what they're looking at is, one of the ones we have further down tonight is a, I think they're talking about queuing on drive-throughs, or maybe that's what this applies to?
Yeah, that's, that's really, those two kind of are packaged together, yeah. And the, the changing in the queuing standards is really a changing, it changes the language in the queue, or the use types that the queues are serving. So the former, the former language was a little bit more opaque, or...
So what I'll do is, we'll get to those a little further down, but I just wanted to make sure, when I had these, I read them, so they covered all our agendas that they applied. Okay. So we'll get that drive-through, whether they come down a little further. So have met those into, any of the other board members have any questions or comments?
I just have, I don't really have a problem with this. I just got a question clarification on the first sentence of this street part of it. "And two-family residences shall have a maximum curb cut of 15 feet, which may be extended to 24 feet by right." What does that mean?
That means, so since this, this amendment is offering up two pathways to extending the curb cut, the first pathway is, is the one to extend it 24 feet, but using pervious surface. So when we're saying by right, we're saying that if you use pervious surface, you can extend the curb cut to 24 feet as of right, without going for relief. The second pathway is to, to seek a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Then, then you would need to seek relief, if you're not intending to use a pervious surface.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clermont?
Yeah, and the only reason to seek a special permit, if they wanted to extend the curb cut up to 24 feet, would be if they were not going to use pervious surface, for whatever reason, cost fact, or whatever, they wanted to...
Correct.
Try and go with the impervious that would come in and state their case.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thanks.
Any board members have any further comments? If not, maybe we, since we're taking them one at a time, we can entertain a vote at this point in time for, number one, for the zone change.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, we recommend adoption of item number one, the proposed zoning amendments.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any voting against? Hearing none. That matter carries. Four in favor, none against. Moving along, the second one is a minor change to the parking requirement to allow the rules for the downtown mixed-use district to apply to the small portion of the artist overlay district that are located in other underlying zoning districts. So that, so this would be for the parking in the downtown would be the same as the overlay?
Yeah, so there's a, section eight that it, that's referencing there is the, is the parking exemption for commercial uses in the downtown mixed-use that are within 1,500 linear feet of a parking garage. And so there's little portions of the artist overlay district that go across, for example, Dutton Street. So on the east side of Dutton Street, you have the downtown mixed-use, but then on the other opposite side of the street, which is very similar in style and density, it, it doesn't benefit from that exemption. So the, our intent of having that exemption in there for redevelopment and reuse of these properties is centered, although they're just on the other side of the street. The Merrimack, Rugged, and Nolan is an example. It's just on the other side of the street, out of the DMU. However, it's in the artist overlay district. If it's within 100, 1,500 linear feet, it, then it benefits from the zoning exemption. And so this is, this is just an attempt to align the benefits of encouraging redevelopment in the downtown mixed-use with the artist overlay district, which was, they have the same intent to have the same type of reuse and redevelopment.
So to put the, for, would this make the parking for the artist overlay district more strict, or a little more lenient?
Lenient.
Okay. And therefore be conforming to what is currently across the street, is what you're saying?
Correct.
All right. So it's to give the benefit to the artist overlay district the same benefit that the downtown mixed-use has by using the parking garages in the facility, and within a certain radius of the project?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. At this point in time, does anybody here wants to speak in regards to a minor change for the, let me get this right, to parking requirements for downtown mix to be the same as the artist overlay district? Or the, let me rephrase that. For the artist overlay district, small portions to conform to the same downtown mixed-use district for parking?
Mr. Chairman, Mark Coleman, 58 Oakland Street, wish to be recorded in favor of this. It makes sense, and I urge the unanimous approval of the planning board. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on the parking amendment? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. That portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone like to speak in opposition in the change of the parking requirement? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. That portion of public hearing is closed. Any board members have any questions or comments on changing that parking requirement?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, approve the minor change to the parking requirements.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. That is approved. Four in favor, and zero against. Next matter, moving on, is a housekeeping change to the artist live-work-use provision in the table of uses to reflect the actual underlying zoning districts to the artist overlay district. So it looks like, as I said, we're going to replace, on our zoning chart, it would be, we place row 12 dash 13A and 12 dot 13B, the table of uses, with the following, and... It looks like you'd bring them in by special permit, Aaron. Is that basically what...
Basically, all this really is, it seems more involved than it really is. So the artist overlay district, the boundaries on the map, they, they cross over into certain zoning districts. It's the downtown mixed-use, it's the urban mixed-use, urban multifamily.
Right. Light industrial as well, right?
This table is supposed to reflect that, it didn't.
Special permit, yeah.
Yeah, it's always been a special permit. The process is the same, just the table didn't match the map.
Oh, I see.
We're just trying to resolve that.
So now what we have, the map, and this would be...
A light.
Okay, it would be in the line, okay. Okay. So that was the intent when we created the artist overlay district, but it wasn't changed, basically, as well as bringing up this...
As it's, as it's changed over time, and the underlying zoning districts have changed here and there, it just, it hasn't, it hasn't been updated on the table.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, because I just, in reference to that...
Absolutely.
Sure. I just, under the, I understand, that's from, under the TMU zone, it was special permit, but now it's no.
I got you.
And then, on the HRC zone, it was special permit, now it's no. Was that, was, was that the intent?
HRC?
They, it just, that's part of the problem, is the HRC zoning district was never within the artist overlay district?
Okay, so it was never even eligible for a special permit?
No, but it, for some reason...
Okay, and then the TMU was never eligible for...
Oh, no, TMU was changed, yeah.
If it wa, if it, if it was, it no longer is.
Okay, all right.
So that's correct.
If you were to look at, within the boundaries of the artist overlay district in the code right now, those that are showed, are showing on this table are what's in there. So we're just trying to clear that up.
Mr. Chairman, another further comment on that?
I'm sorry, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. I just don't know, okay. Any follow-up on that? Any other board members? Attorney Clermont, any questions? No?
No, I have one, Charlie just answered my question.
All right. Which request on the planning board on this matter?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, a motion to recommend approval of adoption of item three on the proposed zoning amendment.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none. That motion carries. Four in favor, zero against. Now, the next matter is coming down to, I guess we're getting through the drive-throughs now. A clarification of the language distinguishing the type of drive-through uses with greater and lesser queue length impacts. Aaron, if you could touch on this, I'd appreciate it. I know there was, I've had some of it in that, and let me just pull out what you gave us on our chart here. So, let me think. So we would replace 6.14 of the table of parking requirements with the following. So we would have, where it says, E, drive-in establishments where driver does not leave his or her car. And number one, where it says restaurant, beverage service, or rather, drive-in established, not listed in 6.1, see below, where permitted queue for 10 cars per drive-up window, plus parking required for any indoor service area. And the next matter, it has pharmacy, bank, or financial services, or businesses, where permitted queue for five cars per drive-up window, plus parking required for any indoor services or office area. So is it basically just to change the queue length? Between what a fast food restaurant would be, or a coffee shop would be, compared to a business bank or financial services?
Yeah, it doesn't actually change the queue length. All, all this amendment does is clarify, particularly on item two, what exactly is allowed to have a shorter queue. So whereas before, it said retailer, consumer service, that let it pretty, left it pretty open to what would, would be allowed to use five cars as a queue minimum. This just went to clarify, it says only pharmacies, banks, or other financial services.
Now, was that touched somewhere else in our zoning as well, isn't it?
In, in the table of uses, there, there was a, a single use type that clumped all drive-through facilities together under one use type.
Oh, I see.
That was, that was kind of some of the discrepancy that we'll get into the next piece of it, but...
Oh, okay.
There's, in the, in the parking and queuing requirements, it recognized two separate queuing types for drive-throughs or, or drive-through types, whereas the, the table of uses only recognized a single, lumped them all together as one type.
Table uses, okay.
Anything else that you want to try to clarify on that, or is that...
That's it for that piece. That's just, that's just to hone in and make it really clear what, what business types are entitled to that shorter queue.
Mr. Chairman, I think, just to clarify, I think what you were asking is, this doesn't have a bearing, per se, on the next item. Under our drive-through requirements, this is already provided for, however, we did not have it in the parking table. Is that correct, Aaron?
It's in the, it's in the parking table, but it's not in the, in the use table. It's on, it's in the page 41 in the parking table.
Page four, right. But it, in, under 6.1.4 of the, the table of parking requirements, did not match what was already stated in here. Is that correct?
Stated in the amendment?
No. What was, what, right now, if you, if you're proposing a drive-through for a pharmacy, how is it phrased?
Retailer-consumer service operation.
Right, okay.
So it does not parcel out pharmacy? It does not, it does not distinguish between the two?
Not specifically. It would be, it'd fall under that, that broader retail and consumer service umbrella. It based, the, the existing requirement... service umbrella. The existing requirement breaks it up by either restaurant or beverage service and all else. Whereas the amendment makes it very specific that the shorter queue requirement only applies to pharmacies, banks, and financial services. And then the ten queue requirement is everything else. It kind of flips that a little bit, makes it more specific for those three very specific things.
We didn't specifically have that in here. We were loosely defining it. Now we're refining that.
Specify.
Correct.
Okay. So what we had in here before, what Mr. Fashett is saying, before we had restaurant and beverage service, ten queues, retailer-consumer service operation, five queues. And now it's kind of just narrowing it down where it says restaurant, beverage, service, or other drive-through. And now you get pharmacy, bank, financial institution. So it's fine to knit more to what that part would be. Is that correct, Aaron, I think?
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we be amending the other section to specifically say that as well?
I think it does. I think if you go into the next piece, that is... That's proposing to break up in the table of uses, the driveway use type into two separate use types. I think it uses the same exact language. So amendment number five should have two separate use types that read the same. So there's now a use type that is servicing restaurant, take-out restaurant, food retailer, beverage service establishment, or any other not listed in twelve dot four G two. G two breaks out pharmacy, bank, and financial service as its own use type for a drive-through. So they should match. I mean, it's not the exact same language, but it matches up.
So does that mean like a car wash with head situations?
A car wash would be...
Be under six point one point one oh?
Correct.
I haven't got that listed properly. All right.
If four and five both deal with the types of the drive-through, do you think we should take those together then? Because I think... I just want to stay with them separate. It doesn't matter to me. I'm just thinking. One's starting to flow into discussion. Four's starting to flow into discussion of five. Or should we just stick with... Go with four, then we'll jump into five?
Um...
Doesn't matter to me. I'm with the board. Much as I'm.
I mean, we...
Our number four is just a clarification, and five is revision, right?
Yeah.
So when we just... Okay. When we keep... I guess we'll keep going with the... We've been doing it there for the clarification. All right. Does anybody want to speak on the clarification of the language for distinguishing for the drive-throughs? Anybody in favor of that? So that's trying is to make it clearer for everybody to know what requires ten cars for the queue drive-through, as well as five, depending on where it's permitted and what is not permitted. So anybody want to speak in favor of the drive-throughs?
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mark Coleman, 58 Oakland Street, Low Mass. Wish to be recorded in favor of this, as well as the previous one, number four as well, both of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anyone else want to speak in regards to clarification of the drive-throughs? Anybody else in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. That portion of public hearing is closed. Anyone want to speak in opposition of the clarification for the language's distinguishment? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. That portion of public hearing is closed. The board members have any further questions? I think it's spelling out a little better what appears to be. Okay.
Motion to recommend approval.
Motion made?
Second.
In second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any in opposition? Hearing none. That matter carries four in favor, zero against. Moving along to the fifth matter is a revision of the table of uses, which separates the two types of drive-throughs to mirror the distinction present in the parking and the queuing regulations. This change would recognize that there are disparate potential impacts of different types of drive-throughs, and as a result, they are not all equally appropriate in all zoning districts. Okay. So we have a little bit of our change, which would be under twelve four, I believe. Is that correct, Aaron?
Yes, correct. Twelve four.
Let me just pull that up.
Twelve four dot G dot one and two.
Could you just try to explain that a little bit in detail, what the revision would be, if you would, please?
Yeah. Basically, other than the separation of the two uses, breaking up into two different types of use, what it's doing is for the pharmacy, bank, and financial services businesses that want to apply or incorporate drive-through services, that it's allowing those uses by special permit in the neighborhood business districts and the institutional district. Whereas all drive-throughs, whether they were financial services, you know, serving a financial services business or a restaurant, were not allowed in those two districts. That's the change.
I'm sorry. Could you just repeat that?
Sure.
I was pulling up the table and looking at that while listening at the same time. I apologize for that.
That's fine. So the new use type for the drive-through that's serving pharmacies, banks, and financial services?
That we talked about on... To change the clarification here. Okay.
So created that use type. And under that new use type, those drive-throughs are now being proposed to be allowed in the neighborhood businesses districts and the institutional zoning districts.
Okay. So you're extending the use of the pharmacy, bank, and financial into a different table of uses, different zone?
Different use type, yeah.
Use type, I'm sorry.
Yeah. And allowed, and that use type being allowed.
So they'll be allowed in different zones?
Mm-hmm. Two zones, yep. And all drive-throughs still require a special permit with the zoning board of appeals.
So even though we're dealing with the drive-throughs, I know when they come before us on the site plan review, we do take them into consideration. We vote on the site plan, but they still have to go before zoning board of appeals for special permit.
Yes, and that's a good point.
So that's going to stay the same. So that's a clarification. I mean, to be clear.
That's right. That stays the same, yep.
So even though we're trying to make some adjustments on the queuing, it still requires a special permit before the zoning board appeals.
That's correct.
On any type of drive-throughs.
Mm-hmm. And that's a good point. The site plan review is triggered automatically by any drive-through still. It doesn't change that trigger. That's still an automatic trigger for site plan review.
So we'd say at first regardless, and then go to zoning board of appeals for any drive-through. And that's on the... Okay. So that change there is... I'm the twelve four. Okay. Does anybody here want to speak in favor of revision of the table of uses for the two types of drive-through?
Mr. Chairman, Mark Coleman, 58 Oakland Street, wish to be recorded in favor of this. Thank you very much.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of the table of use change? Anyone else in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none. That portion of public hearing is closed. Anybody like to speak in opposition of the table of use changes? In opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none. That portion of public hearing is closed. Any of the board members have any further comments or questions? Mr. Fashett, if you don't mind, I'll start with you again.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, in this particular amendment, I did have some concerns. And I know, matter of fact, with you... The two emails that you read into the record, one looks at this as a potential aid for a particular site specific, and the other one recognizes that... Or points out that there are several zones within the city that currently drive-ups are not allowed. And I think when I look at this and knowing the process we went through with the master plan and then supporting the zoning changes at that time, was creating the neighborhood business districts and part of the safeguard. And there is a special permit requirement for building size exceeding five thousand square feet. So the neighborhood business district does provide some options for a larger, big box type of business, but that's not the intent of that zone. And one concern I have is really the business model for a big box pharmacy, and we've seen it with everyone that's come before us, is for a drive-through. I think we can all agree that the traffic impact is somewhat minimized on a pharmacy. However, having a large box pharmacy located in a neighborhood business district is not the intent of the business district. We have districts within the city that accommodate that very well, and we have examples of some nice buildings that have gone up that have fit very well. I do have some concern. Right now, that door is not even open. It's not required. It's not allowed, I'm sorry, under the current zoning. This does open the door. It is subject to special permit. However, at that point, it is on the table, and it is an option for a big bank, a big box pharmacy to look at these sites and know that they can come before the boards for a drive-through, also for the institutional zones. There was specific development that you wanted to see head into those zones. And again, this opens it up for a big box type of pharmacy to end up there. That's not... We're not against those. We have zones for that. We've put some pharmacies in those zones, and we've done a good job at the board level addressing that. However, my concern is, and I know one neighborhood group in Senaval talks about a particular site they have in mind, my concern is if in fact there is some intention that, you know, there's a way to address that particular site, if we can do it, that accommodates the neighborhood, that's fine. I just... With zoning issues, we get into unintended consequences, and it may not impact the site six months from now, these other zones, may not impact it a year from now. But at some point in time, it'd be a year, two years, we're going to be answering questions perhaps from neighbors as to how come this was a possibility in this particular zone. That's the reason why we have pockets at neighborhood business districts. It really is to promote smaller pedestrian-sized, locally-owned-type businesses. And we're a unique city. We have diverse uses within our boundaries, and we don't have a lot of acreage. And we have spots for regional retail, for institution, for small neighborhood district downtown businesses. So I really would urge the members, my colleagues, to take a good look at this. I think, again, if there is some concern from Senaval, we got a particular site, I think that's a key site over there. I think there's some attention that needs to be paid to that site so that something can really work. But my concern is, is to make a change that impacts the city across the board, that, again, I don't think we're going to see an impact in two months. But at some point in time, we'll all wonder how come this was a possibility now. And I understand there's the idea of the special permit. However, it is not allowed as we speak, and there were some reasons for that when this was first reviewed. And I would caution the board to open that door on that particular... In those particular zones. Thank you.
I'm just trying to look at that old zoning chart that we have on page one seventeen. Jerry, do you have that one?
Yeah.
And I will look at the new one here. I'm trying to follow it because on the new one, we don't have the top category.
Yeah, no, I actually wrote it on there.
Okay. So I'm trying to put mine down below it. So I got suburban, traditional, urban, specific purpose, and industrial. I'm trying to basically come across... So...
So they added...
So which... Let me just... If we go from right to left?
Yep.
Which is the first change that?
If you go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
No, no, SP, SP, no, no, then...
Right. And then you have two SPs. Well, before it was SP and an N for no. That's the neighborhood business district.
So the N, I think, would be, is that traditional neighborhood, NB?
No, that's NB, neighborhood business.
Okay. So that's a no.
And that was, again, that was designed for smaller pedestrian-type businesses. And then if you've got no, no, SP, special permit...
Which would be USF, UMF, and UMU, right?
Uh...
Right.
And then...
So that would be the SP would stay the same, so the new one would change the DMU from SP to no?
No. Where are we here? No, that... No, that would stay the same, Mr. Chairman. It's the institutional zone. So it's actually the fourth from the end.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That's the institutional zone. And again, those are large areas. That's the Burbank site all along the Tucket Street.
So the new one would make it a no, and the old one would be special permit?
The... As it currently exists, it's not allowable in the institutional zone or the neighborhood business. And then this change is making it allowable subject to special permit. And again, I would dare say, based on what's in place right now, if a big box pharmacy looks at different spots that they can possibly locate a building, I think the business model is to have a drive-through. So that's... I think that has been somewhat a deterrent in those particular zones. And that's not to say we're trying to keep them out, because I think we've been very accommodating in providing areas of development for those pharmacies. My concern, we have... I have the zoning map here. I mean, we have pockets of business, neighborhood business areas that are... That's exactly what they are. They're right in the heart of residential neighborhoods. And, you know, I just have concern that, again, that opens the door for development that really was not intended for those particular zones, as well as the institutional zones.
I see. I see. What I'm looking at is I'm looking at how we're breaking up G one into G two. You're talking more in G two, and I think I'm looking... Okay, I get you now. What I was doing, I was trying to follow G one, and that's where I was missing here from the N to the SP. Okay.
Yeah. No, G one hasn't changed. The entire category was...
I got you. And I was just reading G one here. So what we would have now would be, we have some plain G in the zoning now. We'd go from... If we change the zoning, we'd go to G one and G two.
Correct.
And what you're addressing is the G two part.
Correct, yes.
Got you. All right. I apologize for that. I was still looking at... So that's where you see, you're talking about the institution, where it's now is a no, we go to the SP.
Correct.
Where it stays the no in the G one. All right, that...
Correct.
Is...
And again, my concern is...
And then the G, then you'd have the SP in G two. We... Okay, nope. That's the... Okay, I'm looking at the other one. Okay.
And I recognize, Mr. Chairman, the fact that the... And the whole reason for this, separating it, is that they recognize the disparate impact of the different types of drive-throughs. However, it's not so much the impact of the traffic or lack thereof in these districts. It's what it could allow then to be built in those districts. And that's not to say a big box pharmacy could not apply for a special permit for a building larger than five thousand square feet. However, they currently would not have available to them a drive-through.
Okay. I follow you now. I was still looking at G one then before I brought it down, the G two on the chart. So, okay. Any board members have any further comments?
Well, I just think Mr. Fashett's comments are well taken. And I'm just wondering, Aaron, if you have any comment or input as to the reason that it's now being brought forward to be allowed in those two districts where we've allowed in the past. Any thoughts behind that?
Yeah. It gets back to the idea that the impacts between those two different drive-throughs and the use types that they're serving are different, and they're going to have a different impact on the neighborhood or a more regional, you know, regional district may be able to absorb that, or the intent of that district is exactly to provide that sort of use. The... When we were looking at a particular project on Bridge Street, that's what brought up the emails on Bridge Street, we recognized that originally, one of the major concerns on a project that was presented there before was a large, like a restaurant or Dunkin' Donuts-type drive-through that would have a significant impact in terms of traffic, but more so impacts on the pedestrian scale and the environment whereby a building that has a queue for ten cars is going to, just by its nature, be more auto-centric. It's going to, particularly in a neighborhood business district, we're talking smaller scale, smaller parcels, you're cramming, like cramming, but you're trying to put more on a single site. And so a restaurant drive-through would negatively impact a neighborhood business district, particularly the pedestrian scale of it, the kind of environment you try to create there. However, those of a pharmacy or a bank, they're... However, those of a pharmacy or a bank, they're, although the minimum queue that we require is five, I think what we've typically seen is no more than three cars ever queued up in one of those kinds of facilities. And thereby, that creates a situation where a site can be laid out or designed where that pedestrian environment can be preserved and/or enhanced with new development where there's nothing there now, and achieve the goals and intent of the neighborhood business districts while still opening up redevelopment of a site to other types of uses that may require a drive-through for their business model. So it really comes, it comes back down to that disparity of a use type that does require, does have larger impacts in terms of cars coming onto and off of the site and using that type of service, which is absolutely appropriate for the region retail, not appropriate for the neighborhood business district. The others, though, may be. And this opens that up and provides an opportunity through the special permit process to review that and make sure that it can fit into the intent of the zoning for that district. So that's what it's trying to do, is...
And as it stands today, in those two districts, if somebody wanted to go in there with a project but wanted a drive-through, it's not allowed under any circumstance, no special permit, no, no opportunity to do that.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mitch, you have any questions?
Yeah, a comment. I agree with Mr. Frichette's evaluation. However, you know, this G2, where, in these two districts, it still has to go through a special permit process, and if it has to come here for evaluation, you know, I see that as a certain level of protection for irresponsible development within a neighborhood business district. However, I do agree with what you're saying. That particular lot in Centerville, I go by that every day, and we really have to work with them to, you know, create a development there that works regardless of what we decide here tonight. It's very, very important to address their needs. That's all I have.
But absent this recommendation and the zoning change, that particular lot that we're speaking of, they won't have the opportunity to put through a drive-through, put in a drive-through, correct?
Correct.
Correct, so...
They won't.
I just hate to...
Again, this is, going back history, is a zoning change to address a particular site and then the impact that it can have down the road, and it was never done with the intent of that happening. So, you know, matter of fact, if we could all work together to come up with something for that site, I think that's fantastic.
Yeah, that'd be a way to...
But I think we're talking about the zoning change in the wrong context. You know, it's, you know, so that's my concern, and I understand a special permit, but, you know, in coming from the neighborhood side, and really, you know, I think we've been well-received as a board that really is sensitive to the citizens of the city, of all the taxpayers, the people that are the backbone, the people that pay for the services, the people that live here, the people that go home to homes here, is that's special permit, that means you're gonna still have to come out, the armies are gonna have to come out, proposals will come before the board on the Fourth of July, and they'll come in the month of December. I mean, it's, we've all been there, we're not, I don't wanna, you know, fool people out there with baloney, I mean, we know how this all works, it is what it is. And I just, I'm just a little concerned, it opens the door, and it just creates a situation where you've gotta come out, and you've gotta come out with armies, and you've gotta come out to try to make your point. I think this board has been very sensitive to the concerns of people, but we do have safeguards right now, and that was the idea with the zoning, is some people can, people can sleep at night feeling pretty good that if I live next to here, I know what can happen and what can't happen. So, with all due respect, I mean, you know, I, the reason I wanna serve here is because we can help in both cases, and it's, I think it's, you know, it's nice to have the faith in the boards to be able to do the right thing. However, it does create a situation where the residents are gonna have to come out. And I think where, it's something that we already have in place as a safeguard, I just have concerns of stripping it away. Again, absent from that, let's take a look at this site. Let's really take, what can be done for the site? Is it appropriate for this to be rezoned? You know, or, you know, I don't know, somewhere we can come around that. I just have real concerns, and again, the neighborhood business district's exactly what they were designed, neighborhood, smaller neighborhood businesses. And I just think it opens the door to be attractive for a big box pharmacy. Not that they're terrible, but we have zones for that, we have spots that they can be accommodated. That's my concern. I just think that that's, a lot of thought went into this initially, that's not to say we got it right the first time around. We've made a lot of amendments. However, I really think that was meant to put some safeguards in place, and I just think we're gonna strip it away, and I would hate to see us do it for the sake of an individual project. And I think that's starting to, that's what I'm starting to hear in the end, at the end of the day. So, I would, Mr. Chairman, I'd actually make a motion that would not recommend adoption of this particular item, and that would require additional discussion. And again, let's put it out there, if there's a discussion regarding this particular site, let's talk about what we can do for that. Otherwise, let's take a good look at what the disparate impact could be on the other zones, that, you know, the other areas of the city that could be impacted. And that's my concern. You know, again, I think, I've seen zoning decisions made for a particular site in a different particular project, and then we've had to deal with applicants coming in, and I'm not gonna say take advantage, because we put it out there for them, but then to utilize it. And then we start to say, gee, that's not what it was really utilized for, and then we're kinda trying to deal within the confines of it. So, that's, again, that's my, that's my concern. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, I hear you loud and clear, like, you know, we don't usually go and change the zoning for one applicant. I mean, I know people keep talking about a site coming before us, I'm not even sure what, obviously, this project hasn't even come before us. I'm just guessing, the project is gonna be, what's it on, Bridge Street where the old Shell gas station used to be?
Yeah, it's West Sixth.
West Sixth Street, right. That's the one where they tried to come in before with the Dunkin' Donuts. They came for zoning change.
Mm-hmm.
Came before us for recommendation.
Yep.
We made a recommendation, and I guess the main question there, the concern was the queuing for the drive-through.
Yeah, they needed to rezone the site to the TMU district, which would allow the drive-through, but by doing that, it also allows the Dunkin', it allows any drive-through, not just a specific drive-through.
And I remember when they...
That's already been tried.
Okay, 'cause I know what they did when they came in for the zoning change, I know we have different opinion here on the board, some felt we could regulate it under the site plan and special permit, and other people were concerned that the fact that if we change that zoning, it would also open up to bathrooms, it could open up to other types of multifamily living in there. And the applicant said, well, this is what we're gonna do, but then we all know, the applicant go ahead and sell the project after we approve it.
Yes.
And I, as a result of that, I know I tried to keep a follow-up on that, 'cause the board was split on, we went back and forth on it, and I think some people didn't mind the idea of the Dunkin' Donuts there, but some people, and I know I was concerned about the zone change, that once they changed their mind, they put a bathroom in there, put other things in. And we can't limit the applicant to that particular type of use once you change the zoning. I know there was a lot of discussion that was raised here that night, the matter never went before a vote of the council, I think it was drawn if my memory serves me correctly.
I believe so, yeah.
So, I mean, I imagine this, the plan is coming down, like, and everybody knows that, we don't see the plans until all the neighborhoods sometimes have their meetings with the applicant, then it comes before us, and then we find out when it's advertised, like, two weeks in advance. So, I know the speculation, and I know we have some input from the board people, so I imagine they've had communication on this, we haven't. I totally understand what Jerry's saying is, how do you approve one thing from one person, and how does another individual, somewhere else, I don't know, the other part of the city, in the acre, the Highlands, they have a project and say, well, can you change your mind for me too? And if you say, well, no, we can't do that right now because we're not having zoning changes, like, well, you did for so-and-so, so what do I say? I'm a city resident like everybody else, I guess, I mean, so I, and it's, so I'm not big myself on changing one for one particular area. I know on that project, the concern was, people wanna fix it. And how we do that is a different way, but to give a blanket approach all across the whole city to look at one particular project, I hear what Jerry's concerns are.
Yeah, I agree. It's not the right way to do this.
You might say, okay, it's gonna fit here, but is there other avenues, other places in the city that we haven't looked at or considered yet, and how it might have a negative impact on somebody else? I mean, so, I always think a lot of these things are kind of a balancing test, what's good for neighborhood, what's good for community, what's good for the city? And on the zone changes, I think it's a more citywide issue, unfortunately, instead of just an individual spot in a neighborhood. And I mean, and I know we're here to promote the neighborhoods, don't get me wrong, I mean, totally get that, and I think that's basically why you have the planning board and why you have the zoning board of appeals, and a special permit, we do it by case-by-case basis.
I should, maybe I should clarify, I mean, the zoning amendment has not been promulgated to solve a problem for a specific site.
Right, I know, well, we had the emails for this, and it started leaning that way, so I'm gonna try to clarify, and I think, as Jerry said, we haven't talked about a certain site and trying to fix that site, so I understand that.
And maybe the German, the discussion...
We don't look at things on individual site, at least, that's my perspective.
The German, the discussion came from looking at the site, but the amendment hasn't been put forward to solve a problem specifically for a site, nor would we really do that on a citywide basis, you know, an amendment that's gonna impact multiple neighborhoods, business districts, and institutional districts. In looking at the site and coming up with a solution that could fit with what the neighborhood plan vision was, and what the master plan was for all the neighborhood business districts, we noticed, again, back to this disparity between impacts from use types for the drive-throughs, that there is a, there's a particular use type that is served by drive-throughs that would have a minimal impact on the business districts while allowing a certain amount of economic development, redevelopment potential. And that our zoning code right now, as it was, completely limits any redevelopment in a commercial district that would want to employ a drive-through. So, we looked at it more broadly, and how could, you know, when you look at a specific site that has likely similar variables to it in the neighborhood business districts, you know, corner lots, say, or a larger parcel of land that could accommodate a bank with a drive-through, et cetera, that if this site is being impacted such that it's not being redeveloped, there's likely another site that is being impacted such that it's not being redeveloped. That by making this change, we're allowing a certain type of use, a drive-through use, that also can meet the standards of the neighborhood business districts, you know, again, the pedestrian scale of it. And that the special permit review gives us the ability to, again, mold that, to fit within that use, that, the intent of those districts. So it's not intended to solve a specific problem on a specific parcel. The problem or the issue came up while reviewing a specific site, which is almost always how it happens.
So that may have triggered some of the review of this process?
Yes, of the, of drive-throughs in general. I mean, just by looking at it, we realized that we actually, in one section of the zoning code, had separated use types for drive-throughs, where in another part, we lumped it all together. So in one section, we were acknowledging the fact that there's different impacts from different commercial uses, in one section we're not. And so that's, we're trying to, you know, change the zoning code so that it is, it's more reflexive, more reflective of that use type in that district, and give a process that does protect the neighborhood business districts while still allowing an avenue for redevelopment in places where it makes sense, or may make sense.
Just for discussion, I mean, I think all the points, you know, are well-taken. I think Jerry makes an excellent point that we don't want to do a citywide zoning change just to possibly accommodate one project, and that's sort of where it looks like this may be leaning. That being said, we're also eliminating any possibility of any project that wants to have this type of a drive-through in these two districts, as it is right now, if they're, and I just throw it off for discussion. If we were to recommend approval and the council approved this, there would be a special permit required through the ZBA in order to get a drive-through establishment in one of these two districts. And I'm thinking if there was a way to make that even more restrictive, I mean, we want to, we want to have the most control possible in these two districts where we've not allowed drive-throughs in the past, we want to have as much control as possible, and I'm wondering if there may be a situation where they may need a special permit before both the planning board and the ZBA, something like that, or maybe council approval, which is, you know, something that's done on occasion. I just throw those out as an idea.
I, you're saying, you're just trying to say, we may have a project, it may work, but if we eliminate that opportunity now, without further board review by us, ZBA, or council, then we're tying our hands to the product, they may benefit the city in the future.
Right. And then, at least if it required a special permit before both the ZBA and the planning board, everyone would have to love it, you know, I mean, you'd have to have four out of five members on both boards, so...
It's really gonna have to meet what people want.
I think you'd need at least that level of comfort that any project that came before you, if it didn't, if it didn't fit the bill, could be, could be shot down on special permit.
I mean, I think it even goes further, I think, if you even said even the council got involved, because didn't the council take away the authority from us on one of the special permitting, and gave it to themselves on the...
On the planned residential development, Mr. Chairman.
What's the name of it again?
Planned residential development.
Planned residential development. After we voted on it last, they said, you can't do that anymore, we're gonna do it for now.
Yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of a zone, I just...
I remember that specifically.
Yeah, I thought you might remember that one.
It was Westview Road or something.
Right, so, I mean...
Yeah, it was.
That's almost, you know, so we don't do those anymore. We used them.
Yeah.
I just, again, it's another night, residents have to come out, it's another board you have to attend. I understand, and I appreciate, especially the, doing it at the council level, we've had honest discussions about this, what it does is that now you've got the political aspect of it with the will of the people that vote the people in to have some impact on it. That was the whole idea of West, you know, with the project on Westview Road and the planned residential development went to that direction. You know, again, to, I just hate putting our residents in that position. We've, we've, we have spots where this can happen. The neighborhood business district was to direct certain types of development, and what we're saying is that, well, if we're not gonna get the, and especially when we're in tough economic times like this, and you don't see a lot of projects coming before us, and we're actually fortunate, we've had probably more than our share projects, we've had a lot of communities, it's easy to start to strip some of this stuff away, say, ah, we're not seeing development, but boy, when it starts to turn around, we're wondering what the heck happened, and now we're catching up and we're chasing our tail. So, you know, I just, you know, we've got some nice safeguards in there relative to that in the neighborhood business district, and I just have some reservations about that. But, you know, your points are well-taken, Joe, I mean, I think that's...
Jerry, can I ask you, are you more concerned with just the neighborhood one, or are you more concerned with the industrial one as well?
I'm actually more concerned with the neighborhood, yeah, because of the very nature of it. You know, you look at some of the pockets, there's one down on, you know, a good example in Bonham, where Louis Drugstore used to be.
Oh, down...
But, yeah, but, you know, that whole site could be taken from a big box type of pharmacy, you know, I wouldn't see them looking at doing that now because they can't have a drive-through, you know? But now they could look at that site, say, hey, that's a viable site to put that. Now, if the neighborhood wants it, I guess, but, you know, again, that's why we put those safeguards in place, not to promote that type of development in those neighborhood character zones, the neighborhood business zones. Perhaps this would, you know, I have a, I'm coming from the position of, I was the neighborhood chairman when we went through all of this, maybe this would be beneficial if we had a discussion with the neighborhood people here to really give some, you know, what their thoughts are on it. I could be all wet based, you know, but, I mean, I, this is, this was the thought process before, this was a concern. I think Deb Ford-John from the Protectable Citizens Council is pretty much consistent with what the concerns have always been out there, and I think those are, those are well-founded concerns relative to, you know, the impact in those, in those particular zones, so...
Any other further comments from...
Yeah, I'd like to comment on Joe's suggestion. I think that's the answer, I mean, the more concerned... I mean, the more control that we have as a board, the better development you're going to get. I mean, the closer we can look at it. To what level, I'm not sure, but I agree with what, what you're saying. And maybe, however, maybe we should meet with the neighborhoods or something, get some, get some direct feedback and-
And I know, difficult, like I said, both are neighborhood associations, which we could change our night, but unfortunately, we've had this one in the past. We could, because the council wants us to be viewed on TV, and as a result of that, this is your night available to us, because this room is used every other night of the week. That's why we stuck with the Monday. And when we requested in the past by an able association, we should, we'd be more than happy to move if we could accommodate everybody, but-
Mr. Chairman, do you remember, I came before this board requesting that change sometime?
Maybe they could change it.
And then they'd say, well, we want you on Tuesday night, I mean, Monday night, so you could be in here, because of all the other board people that meet and would live televised. And at that time, I think we were told what the effect would cost to have it at the other, moving down the hall, maybe reception room, or if you put in planning development. And that cost was off the table, so. I totally understand that, because we have tried to discuss that with the neighbors before, to give them the benefit to come forward on projects like this, and-
Just in defense of the neighbor groups, I know, I mean, it's tough even professionally, if you have a meeting that was always the same every month. If you move it, people that have been doing that for 10 years, they can never get it right. And like, the Protectable Citizens Council for 30 years, it's been the first Monday of every month, and you start, and the E-Board's been the third Monday of the month. So it, you know, you start to change that, and all of a sudden, it becomes difficult for people to remember there's a meeting.
Okay, so now, we're back to the decision on what we want to do with the revision. And I think it basically comes down to those two sticky parts that, sticky spots on the zoning change that Jerry has brought up in regards to changing once the special permit, but before it was denied, it was just no, you couldn't get it, which would be in the traditional neighborhood, which would be the N B zone and the institution zone. Where those are only two changes, right, just going from no to a special permit process. So at this time, we'll have to make a motion one way or another to make a recommendation to the city council on the matter.
When is this being brought before the council for approval?
I don't believe it's been scheduled as of yet. If there's a recommendation that's made tonight, it could go to the council for next Tuesday. But if it's not, it-
And then they set it down for public hearing, right?
Correct.
So it wouldn't be next Tuesday?
Well, we're correct.
Wouldn't be the public hearing at the council. The recommendation goes to them, then they decide to the public hearing.
I wonder if there might be an opportunity to meet with the zoning subcommittee on this particular one, and perhaps have some of the neighborhood representatives at that meeting as well. I think it's important enough that we could, you know, put off our decision or our recommendation on this one until we meet with the neighborhood representatives and the zoning subcommittee and knock a couple of ideas around as to what we discussed tonight. Some opportunities maybe to modify the zoning.
If I heard that, that was in the form of a motion, is that right? If that's the case, I would second that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so there's a motion that we take, we do not vote on this agenda tonight until we have a chance to have input with the city council, subcommittee for zoning and our public hearing with the neighborhood association to be present? That basically, how you want to phrase the motion?
Yes, I'll make that the formal motion.
Motion's made in, second by Mr. Fichette. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes.
Now, could you check with the zoning subcommittee if they have a meeting scheduled, maybe we could jump in on that? And then we can invite the neighborhood representatives to come to that meeting, if not, maybe we can schedule one.
And the other question is, on this here, obviously, we make a recommendation, that might not happen.
It's true.
And we could just say, we're going to take it up regardless.
That's right.
Because we only recommend in body, they, you know, let's face it, that happened to us on the wind thing. We made a recommendation, meet with them, accepted that we have met yet.
That's right.
We only recommend in body, so, okay. So, moving along then, we'll go to number six. This one is a housekeeping change to fix mistakes in the lettering sequence in the use table, which was inadvertently included in the prior zoning amendment. So this is only to change under the small wind energy facility from one letter P to a Q?
Yeah, just numbering mistake, or lettering mistake, I guess.
Okay, so this is a lettering mistake, did anybody here want to speak in favor of changing the letter mistake? Mr. Goldman? Hoffman? Come on, you gotta go six for six.
They could make it.
Watch how I'm going to put in the minutes, come on. Anyone else, anybody want to speak in favor of changing it? Anyone in favor, in favor? Hearing none, any in opposition? In opposition, in opposition? Hearing none, what's the request of the board?
Motion approved.
Motion must approve, second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Here's those, yes? Any against? Hearing none, the motion carries, four in favor, none against. Moving along, on the new business, we have the Mullen Rule for approval. The planning board will consider the presented signature form for the purpose of utilizing the Mullen Rule. The rule approved by the city council on September 28th, 2010 will permit a board member to vote on a matter where they have missed one session of a hearing, given that they reviewed the material presented at the hearing where he or she was absent. This matter is basically for a public hearing, and if we don't have all board members present and the matter is continued to a future date, what that does, it allows the planning board member to either go back and review the previous meeting, either by audio or video, and get caught up on all the concerns, and then be allowed to vote at the next meeting. The matter was referred to the council. They voted to allow the planning board and other board members, I mean, other boards to adopt that provision. As a result of coming before us, planning development brought up a copy of our bylaws to allow that in there. And what we suggested, I think Attorney Clermont brought up in one of the meetings, was that we have a form that gets signed by the board member to say who they are, what commission they're on, what meeting they missed, and how they either reviewed all the evidence, which is either audio or video recordings, and they sign it, and they give it to somebody, in this case, would give it to associate planner, and they would sign off on that, and that would go in the file. Basically, I believe Mr. Clermont kind of gave us an outlet draft of this letter before, I think, Aaron fine-tuned it. So this is just basically to vote tonight, to, basically, accept it into a bylaws per se? Or since the council already did, or just approve the form?
Yeah, that, well, there's, there's two pieces, there's the actual form, which, you know, just to take a look at and make sure it covers all the bases. And I think we added the piece that Mr. Clermont noted that, which included a date, that the actual certification was received by staff, whether it was myself or Joe, and put into the file. And then there's a piece for the bylaw. And it's not necessary for the board to have this in their bylaws to actually take action on it, but I just recommended that it might be nice to have there informationally for people who are looking through the bylaws as a, as a reference for, for process. And I just wanted to hand out quickly, I added one little piece to the, to the end that basically clarified that, you know, for somebody who's going to go through this, one of the board members to go through this process, had to attest and certify through writing that they viewed and reviewed all of the material pertinent to the agenda matter.
So do we need a formal vote to?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a couple of thoughts too on the form as I was looking through it. I noticed just in the title of the form, I think it starts off of participation in a session. Am I reading that right? I think the first word should be certification of participation in a session, et cetera.
Yeah, I think there's a word missing, yeah.
And then perhaps just, it might be overkill, but maybe we could add a number four that just would say, I have completed and signed this certification form prior to voting on the above referenced matter. Because the statute does say, before any such vote, the member shall certify in writing. So it's not just seeing the video prior to the vote, you actually have to sign this form and hand it in before you vote. Because other than that, it could be thrown out. So I just would add that as an addendum to the form.
So by procedure, whether someone did it, then they signed it after the fact?
So the number four would say something-
I just wrote that down on my copy.
Oh, you didn't, okay, that'd be helpful, thank you. Thank you.
Would members have any comments on what Joe brought up? I mean, just to try to, I think he's trying to make the form as simple, but also, yeah, still legal. So it covers basically all the requirements, that it's authenticated, you know, by the author, signed off by someone else, and it's done before the next vote.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying.
So can we entertain a motion to approve that to the bylaws and the form is adopted?
I'll make a motion to approve the bylaws and the form as outlined.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I mean, I should have the second, who wants to second that first?
Second.
Second. No, I'm favoring, I, chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none, that's approved. Notices from a budding town, do you have any questions on those matters? Anybody have any correspondents on those? Hearing none, entertain a motion to place one in file?
I can marshmellow place the notices from a budding towns on file.
Second?
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Here's those, yes? The zoning board of appeal notices? Do we have any of those? I don't play my head in my copy.
Oh, did, yeah, there is one for-
I didn't get mine.
Is it 20 Easy Street?
Which one was it?
20 Easy Street.
No, I don't think I got that.
Oh, I didn't get that.
I didn't see that.
Okay, I have a couple copies here.
Okay, I didn't catch mine on the, is it just one? Okay, all right, thanks. I didn't catch mine, okay.
No, I can look on the top, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so, this is a zoning board of appealed matters, that's come before us for recommendation only. Aaron, what date is this going before the zoning board of appeals, do you know what the date is? When they go before them? The next, their next meeting would be?
October 25th.
Okay, October 25th. So we have, the applicant is Edward and Mary Lou Maguire. The address is 20 Easy Street, Lowell, Mass. Property location is the same. The zone is an S S F zone. They want to extend the proposal alterations, if any kitchen will be extended onto existing deck. The property improvement will be the deck. So this is requiring, what's it, a variance?
Yeah, they're seeking a side yard variance because-
Oh, the side yard, okay. It looks like on the side yard, they need, they need 10 feet, a minimum of 10, and a total sum of at least 25. So that means they need 10 per side, and on the right side, by coming out, they will have only 6.3 feet. It's a minimum size lot to 10,000, but it looks like they have 7,000, which was probably there when they got the property. Minimum frontage appears they have, front yard appears they have, well, actually, they need 25, they have 20. So that, which is existing, correct? So on the existing, they show up with the frontage in the lot requirement. But so here, they want to push the property out to the right side, put the kitchen extended onto the deck. Therefore, the deck becomes enclosed, therefore, it goes out, and therefore, triggers the side yard. So they would be 6.3 feet to the property line.
So an existing deck?
Yeah, so, but then they want to enclose and put the kitchen on there, same kitchen will be extended onto the existing deck.
So the footprint wouldn't change at all?
Nope, they'd come out, now it's enclosed, it's sort of like, you know, how we have the decks and the, so therefore now, they have to meet the side yard requirement. And now they're 6.3 instead of a minimum of 10. Because they have, they have the total of the 25, which is the 23 and the 6, but they don't have a minimum of 10 on the right side. This is like, this is up off of Thorne Street, heading out towards the Drakken Line, right? Yeah, it looks like it's right by the Drakken Line there, right?
Yeah, yeah, down, down the phone. Six, a little over 6 feet away from the property line.
Right, and they have me 10, so. I mean, it's one thing when you have a deck, but now they converted to, I mean, I think they, you know, I think 10 is close as it is, in my own personal opinion, you know. You don't know how close this property line is, how close the people are to each other.
Yeah, you can't tell with the drawings.
You know, so.
Looks like they could move it out back, they have a-
Yeah, they have like some type of, what's it?
Pool there?
Looks like, yeah, is that above ground, maybe? I don't know, to say, yeah, is that the B V A for above ground?
Yeah.
And it looks like they have the existing deck here that goes by the pool too, where the kitchen doesn't go here. But see how that deck light must come all the way up?
Yeah, of course, extends right around.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, yes, I know a lot of times how we've said the biggest impact would be to the neighbors that are right, without hearing their concerns. But I think the 10, I like to keep that enforceable if need be, because I think it's close, unless we hear otherwise. I think that's what the zoning board of appeals will have the benefit to hear from the neighbors. At this time, I'd make a motion to deny.
That's second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, chair votes, motion denied. So that's the only ZBA one we have?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, and after that, we have, any general correspondents? I'll start with you, Aaron, first.
Yeah, the only, there was a couple of things I have here. I've received a couple notices for the annual meeting for NEMCOG. I didn't, I think I have about half, so I'd hand that out after the meeting, but I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
What's the date on that? I know we're talking about-
Did you receive one? Okay, it's Thursday, October 28th, at the UMass Lowell ICC, and starts at 5:00 P.M. But I'll hand out, just to make sure everybody heard that. And then, I think we mentioned at last meeting, we'll be sending out in the next packets a rezone for the parcel 600 Rogers Street. It's a petition from the, well, property owner or prospective property owner to extend the regional retail over, I think it's the suburban single-family district.
Vote on Rogers Street?
Correct, right on Rogers Street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right by Park Ave, it's the intersection of Park Ave and Rogers. I think the plan, we may have already handed this out, but I think the plan that you have actually says Holyrood, that may be confusing, it's actually Park Ave.
I thought Aaron had about that briefly today, and he said, did we, did we give you the new zoning thing? I said, we mentioned last time when we're here, because I remember Mr. Chairman said he couldn't be here for tonight's meeting, but he'd be here for the next meeting. I said, that's what the zoning was going to change. But when we received the communication with email before, I looked at the plan quickly prior to coming to the last meeting, and I said, it looks like it's, the plan says Hollywood coming down to Rogers Street. I'm like, I don't think Hollywood comes down to Rogers Street, unless it's a paper street cut through the back. Because it mentions, I think it's Whitehead Street, which is right behind the other property that came before us before, which was that Citgo, Citgo Gal Station, which was going to put the driver through. And then, we vote on that, that didn't come further, and that street comes right behind there. So I'm thinking, how does Hollywood meet Rogers Street? So I'm trying to figure out what number was 600. And then when I, when I talked about it briefly today, he looked at the plan and says, you're right, because Hollywood doesn't come right down to Rogers Street.
It starts, yeah.
I know where Whitehead Street is, because I used to know before, it was behind Lefty's in the old days. And I know people lived in that neighborhood, and part of my paper was a little further behind there. But now I'm saying, I don't know where this comes all the way through. And then when I said, when he said it's Parkview, I said, now I know exactly where, so it's where Jilly's is now, right?
Correct, it's the Jilly's site, yeah.
But it would want to be a lot bigger and go back further into the neighborhood.
Correct, yeah, basically, it's a split zone lot, right, the front half is regional retail and the back half is-
I know, that used to be several different things, at one time, it was a bank. Which bank was that, do you remember which one it was? I remember it was Bank and something else before Jilly's, I know it's changed quite a few times, but I remember, at one point, it was a bank. I don't know if it's a-
Because the drive-through was still there, you can see it.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a first, National Bank or whatever, I remember it was a bank at one point, and I think it changed to something else before it came to Jilly's too, but-
It was Lefty's.
No, Lefty's was a little more over to the right. Lefty's was more where Kilkelly's is now, across from, Kilkenny's there, yeah, across from Hogan Tire, yeah. And Lefty's had a little more of that area right there. And that's back when Lefty's was there, a lot of that wasn't developed back then. So that's one for public hearing for the next meeting, right?
Correct, that first, and I believe that's it.
Was that November 1st, right?
Yep.
Any of the board members have any communications?
Well, there's, there's one other thing I do want to mention. I know the Lowell General Hospital is going to be requesting, I think, for the November 15th meeting, a revision to the site plan approval to include a helipad and some minor changes to the driveway and that sort of thing. So I think we're going to get the materials this Friday, but they're going to try to get on for the 15th, so we'll get that up.
So they're going to try to open it first as well? Would that be off of November 1st, that mean it's deadline?
No, the 15th, that'll be for the 15th.
Oh, the 15th, okay, I'm sorry, okay. Let me say, yeah, I didn't know if that would be the deadline.
Do the neighbors get re notified on that?
Unless it's, well, there's, when it comes before the board, there's, there's kind of two steps. One's determine whether or not it's a substantial material change. If it is determined to be such, then it does require the notification process. If it's determined to be a minor change, then it's, it could be- If it's determined to be a minor change, then it's, it could be heard at that time.
The concern is with the helipad, like they have from the neighbors on that, yeah, because-
Something to clarify with the Little General, I think they have-
It did come up at the site plan.
Yeah, we asked the questions about that, right?
The neighbors said not at this time, so, time moves quickly, I guess. Any further communication with board members or not?
That's all I have for now.
I have none.
entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second?
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, good night, thank you, everyone.
I have one, I have one.